Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight, we are having two committee meetings, the first one being the Committee of the Whole, and then our second meeting, uh, second committee meeting will be City and Safety Services. Our first item with Committee of the Whole is to discuss single-use bags in the city of Athens, and Councilmember Jennifer Cochrane has been working on this quite some time. I know she's convened a group of business persons and Rural Action, our former mayor, Paul Weil, um, then Councilmember Steve Patterson, who's now mayor, and, uh, many people gathered around the table to discuss the possibilities for this. So, uh, without further delay, I'll turn this over to you, Jennifer.
Thank you, President Nisley. Um, as President Nisley mentioned, this is an issue that I've been interested in for some time before I, uh, was elected to council, and it's an issue on which I've heard from a number of constituents in Athens about, asking, you know, why don't we enact some type of ordinance? Many people have asked about a, a plastic bag ban, um, and that is not the language that I'll be using tonight because, um, I, I think we don't need to use the confrontational language of a, of a ban. I think there are a lot of other solutions that we can look at, and I think that there's a multi-pronged approach to, um, reducing single-use bag waste in and around our community. You don't have to travel very far to see the environmental impacts of these, um, what have become disposable products. Uh, the typical plastic bag that you receive at a grocery store is in your possession for about 12 minutes before it's thrown away. Uh, many people do recycle those, more in Athens than in other areas, I believe. Um, but nationwide, the recycling rate for those products is only about 5%. So while we may feel like we're doing our part by taking our bags back to the grocery store, um, in fact, a very small percentage of those products are actually recycled. And the environmental impact is great. Those products remain in our landfill for thousands of years. They do not biodegrade. They photodegrade and break down into very small particles. Uh, they end up in our, our streams, our rivers, and ultimately in the oceans, which, granted, we're rather isolated from here in the state of Ohio, um, but, as you can see, if you conduct your own research, as I have done, um, these ordinances have been enacted in states across the nation, beginning particularly on the west coast and now more so on the east coast, where they do see the great impact on their beaches, um, and on their water fowl and, and the fish life. So, when plastic ends, ends up in the, um, the water system, it ends up in animals, and then it ends up in the consumers of those animals, which ultimately are humans and larger animals. So, um, as President Nisley mentioned, I have worked recently with Rural Action Zero Waste Project to convene some community conversations on this issue, and, uh, originally, this issue bubbled up through the Sustainability Commission, and it was one of the top-mentioned issues, um, at our original planning meeting, uh, public meeting held at the Athens Community Center to talk about working on a sustainability plan for the city of Athens. So, under the category of solid waste, it was the top, um, most-mentioned issue. And so, that's one of the reasons why, um, I have conducted a lot of research looking at ordinances across the country. Cities in 18 states have enacted ordinances, all the way from California, um, to Washington, Alaska, Hawaii, and, um, Massachusetts, New Mexico, cities too numerous to name here. None have yet done this in Ohio, so we could potentially be the first to make this progressive step, which I think is well-fitting of our history as a recycling pioneer with the first curbside recycling program here in the state of Ohio. So, um, I have lots of information to share over the coming weeks as we bring forward an ordinance for first reading. I look forward to some lively discussion. I know there will be many, many questions that folks will have, and I welcome them to contact me and others who are working on this project. And we do have a guest here tonight to speak with us about, um, her work on plastic reduction through the, oh, the Ohio Sierra Club. And before, before I invite her to, to come to the podium, I, I should mention a little more about the ordinance. So this ordinance will involve, um, a fee, not a tax, because the fee will be, will remain with the stores that collect the fee, and the idea of this fee is really to promote behave, positive behavior change, because so many of us have, you know, at home or in the trunks of our cars, a large collection of bags like these ones, whether they're made of hemp, or cloth, or some other material. We have them, or, you know, we, they pass through our possession, and we often forget to use them. But if there is a fee at the register, um, and each time we forget our bag, we have to pay a, a small fee, which is proposed 10 cents in the ordinance that I'm going to bring forward, then maybe we will be more likely to remember the next time, and we will be more likely to help spread the word among our friends and equip those who do not yet have a collection of reusable grocery bags or tote bags. Um, so many ideas have been brought to the forefront through our community conversations about having bag swaps, um, educational programs for our children in the schools, about making your own bag, upcycling, um, and doing other activities like that to help promote single-use bag reduction in our community, so that we can reduce bag litter, bag waste, and promote a cleaner, safer environment for all of us. So in the, in the weeks to come, we will be introducing, um, this legis, proposed legislation, and it will have a phased-in, um, impact for our local retailers, and I certainly want to recognize the work that our retailers are already doing with providing reusable bags for sale at the point of purchase. Um, I do, in my collection, have, have some of those bags from Lowe's and Krogers and other stores, and it's wonderful that they are becoming more readily available. Um, locally, the pharmacy on Stimson Avenue has already started a bag exchange, so if you are at the pharmacy and you forget your bag, you can pick one up and take it with you, just like take a penny, leave a penny. So I plan to stop by and drop a few of my extra bags at the pharmacy. Uh, other ideas we've talked about have included, um, art programs to help folks learn about making their own beautiful, unique bags in the community. So those are just some of the, uh, possible solutions and ideas that we've discussed. And at this point, I would like to introduce Alyssa Yoder, who's come down to speak with us from Columbus about the work, um, that she's doing with the Sierra Club.
Hi. So first, I'd like to thank everyone here on the Athens City Council for giving me an opportunity to speak to you guys, um, about this issue. Um, as she said, I'm Alyssa Yoder, so I'm a conservation coordinator for the Sierra Club, working on clean water issues here in central Ohio. Um, I'm here tonight representing, um, the Sierra Club Central Ohio Group, and so it's approximately 3,500 dues-paying members here in central Ohio. Um, but I'm also here to represent our natural resources, our wildlife, um, our mammals, um, because they all have a voice that are an important part of this conversation that we're having tonight. Um, I'll try not to repeat all the stuff that Jennifer talked about, um, but obviously, you know, the first thing is that plastic bags never go away, right? So, um, they were, they're made to last forever, but designed to be disposable. So, we have this disposable item that we use for 12 minutes. Um, each of us will use one bag for 12 minutes, but then it will remain on our planet for at least a thousand years. And so we have this very unbalanced life of a plastic bag. And as she said, the problem with the plastic bag is that it doesn't biodegrade, it doesn't disintegrate, it, um, photodegrade. So the UV will break down the plastic bag into smaller pieces, but those pieces will still remain. Um, so these pieces will enter our waterways, uh, they'll enter our sewers, and eventually get down to the ocean. And so, um, here in Ohio, it takes about six years for all of our trash to go downstream into the North Pacific, they call it the garbage patch. So what this is, um, the garbage patch is, uh, a gyre, and so it, there are seven gyres on the planet where debris and trash will naturally collect in seven areas on the planet due to the ocean currents and winds. So in this gyre, uh, then our North Pacific garbage patch gyre, um, is estimated to be about two ti, two times the size of Texas. Um, and the reason that we don't know the actual estimate of it is because we can only see about 30% of the plastic at the top of the water table, and the 70% remains below. So we don't have a good aerial view of it. Um, and so 80% of all that trash that gets there, um, 80% of the trash found in the ocean is, uh, is, comes from land. Um, and so, obviously, there's a really high concentration of plastic, and it's not this floating garbage patch, it's more of a plastic soup. So you have these little tiny pieces of plastic that you can't take out of the ocean. Um, and so there's high concentrations of the plastic, um, anywhere from six pieces of plastic per one plankton up to 14. So, for, if you're a fish, you know, a bird, um, you're, you have, you know, six pieces of plankton you're eating before one piece of plankton. And we know that plankton is at the bottom of the food chain, right? So everything above it depends on that plankton and the species above it, you know, to be part of that food chain to sustain life in the ocean. So, obviously, you can see how very quickly this plastic is entering the food chain and then the human food chain as we start to consume, you know, these fish that have mistakenly eaten plastic. Um, and so, plastic, um, in the US, we are purchasing about 12 million barrels of oil or producing per year to make our plastic bags. So, obviously, that creates a whole other issue of what kind of environmental impacts are we creating, what kind of pollution, um, all sorts of political things around oil are involved with that, that I'm not really gonna go into. Um, but unfortunately, um, all of this plastic that gets into the ocean, um, creates a lot of death on the planet. So, plastic bags kill approximately 1 million seabirds per year, 100,000 turtles per year, 400,000 mammals each year, and, um, these deaths are obviously really long and torturous deaths, so the plastic bag is ingested, it's gonna block the digestive system and not allow the animals to eat. The plastic bag gets wrapped around beaks, wings, flippers, um, it's gonna weigh the bird down or the mammal down, and it's gonna suffocate or drown. Um, not to throw all these statistics at you, but I, I will throw it one more. So this January, the Ocean Conservancy put out, um, a study that said that the year 2050, pound for pound, plastic, now, you all know plastic is pretty right, will outweigh fish, pound for pound by 2050. So, that's a, that, I don't, I don't really know what to do with that statistic because it's so staggering. So, obviously, we don't know what kind of future that means for the ocean and for us, and what kind of things are gonna result from that. Um, what we do know is that the US EPA estimates that only 5.2% of plastic bags are getting, are taken out of the waste stream and actually recycled. So, we have 95% of our plastic bags going into the landfill or not being properly disposed of and going into the environment. And I think that the interesting thing about the recycling of the plastic bag, if you look at it, um, is that the plastic bag recycling center is at a grocery store. So it's not like a can of paint where you're asking someone to drive to one specific location certain hours, and you may even have to pay to, you know, dispose of your paint. We're asking them to go to the grocery store, which they go to at least one times a month. And we are still only getting people to recycle 5.2% of their bags. They're going to this place, you know, at least once a month, and that's a really low recycle rate. So, what we're seeing is that that system doesn't work, because it's not creating any kind of decrease of plastic use. So what we're seeing does work is that when cities create a negative consequence. So, when cities, um, put a charge on a plastic bag of 10 cents, so anyone who chooses to use a plastic bag, you know, has, will be charged 10 cents. So they're gonna start thinking about, do I really need this plastic bag for my p, my pack of gum? You know, and all these other positive incentives, like the wooden nickel from Whole Foods, really isn't working either. We're not seeing any kind of decrease of plastic use, or, and plastic use or plastic entering our environment. So, what we're seeing is a negative consequence will create a decrease of plastic use. And, approx, there's, right now, there's about 150, 152 US cities that have some kind of ordinance in place, um, address it, that addresses the plastic bag use. And so that is currently 20 million Americans that are living in communities that have some kind of ordinance for plastic bags. So, we're not, we're not really, you know, creating the wheel here. There's, you know, grocery stores on the west coast and east coast that also are here that have dealt with it already. So that's one good thing, that we're in this kind of, you know, later, later stage, that we don't have to quite do as much work. Um, but we also, what we also, um, see, well, there'd be one specific example in Boulder, Colorado, so we on our border is a pretty green, you know, progressive city. They recently, last year, um, had a 10-cent bag fee, and they reduced their use of plastic bags by 68% in six months. So that's a huge amount for people who are like Athens and very green, you know, so there's still lots, lots to gain, even in these green cities. And I think, like, what's interesting about Athens is that I'm working with the city council at Columbus as well, and I think that these bigger cities are really looking for one city to create this domino effect. You know, we have staff also in Cincinnati and Cleveland, and Cleveland really gets it because they're up there on the Great Lakes, and they're also seeing these gyres of plastic in our Great Lakes as well. And, we are seeing kind of some city councils saying, we're waiting for that one city, you know, and I would love for you guys to be that one city and create this whole domino effect across the state. And I think it, I think, you know, it is a good time to do it, and I, I really hope that, you know, if anyone has any questions, feel free to contact me or, you know, reach out to anybody, and I would be more than happy to work with anybody or answer any questions.
Thank you, Alyssa.
How many of those cities have all-out bans of the 150 cities, and, do you know?
Um, there's not too many.
So it's usually this negative consequence of charging for the bag?
A fee, yeah.
A fee, okay.
It's more of the countries in Europe that have gone to-
Right.
-the country ban, yeah.
Right.
Councilmember Butler?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Yoder, for coming down and sharing with us, um, and it would be exciting to be part of that domino effect. And you're correct in acknowledging that we wouldn't be reinventing the wheel. I, I heard a story this morning on NPR, which I pulled up on the computer here. Um, Washington DC enacted legislation like this and saw 60% rate of usage decline, which is good by enacting this, and they're in the process of doing so. Right now, in New York City, legislation passed supporting moving forward like this in New York City. So I feel that it is something that we have models out there that we can look at for success. So, thank you.
Are there any cities that have a, a larger fee, such as a quarter? And if so, if our goal is to, you know, uh, impress people with the cost, the hidden cost of using these bags, uh, I would hope that council might consider a higher fee.
Yeah, so that is, you know, some discussion, because we're not really charging the real environmental cost of plastic. And so, um, what some cities have done is, um, as the years go by, they're starting to see less revenue, if some cities choose to, to have some of the revenue go to the city, they're seeing less revenue come in from the charges of the plastic bags, so they'll start to increase it, um, because it does kind of become like, oh, it's just 10 cents. And so, um, some cities have a long-term goal of increasing the fee, and then also then building into it, um, using biodegradable materials, like corn, or, um, like the corn, the corn bags and stuff like that as an alternative in, as opposed to the plastic or paper.
I'll briefly address that question as well, because I just looked up some of the fees earlier today, um, because I have heard people say, well, why not start with a nickel? And that's actually what New York City just passed, because they previously failed to pass a higher, um, fee with a bag ordinance. My thought at this point is that we should start with 10-cent fee, because a nickel would be too, too small, in my opinion, but look at, in the long term, perhaps increasing it. There are fees out there spanning the range from a nickel up to a dollar. I saw one city in, in Texas that has a dollar. I think that our consumers would certainly balk at a dollar at this point, so I, I would suggest that we start small. Member Tautas?
Thank you. Going back to these cities that have already, that have already instituted some sort of charge, or, or even a full, no, no full-out bans, that's correct? Is, there's no-
There are.
There are, okay. Um, is there any education components that are, that any of these cities are also enacting at the same time to help encourage? I mean-
Absolutely. Oftentimes, a lot, um, of the models that we have researched, um, include, you know, about a six-month window of like, get ready, this is happening, they stencil, like, paint stencil, like, on the cement in the grocery bags, don't forget your bags, or, um, they'll do a lot of outreach and education and to kind of buffer that, so people aren't like all of a sudden, one day, not knowing that it's happening. So there, and then there's long-term, um, a lot of long-term education throughout, like she said, like, we do, um, turning old t-shirts into bags, or we'll do, um, screenings of the movie Bag It, or any kind of education, um, and outreach to lower incomes to kind of get people to understand why, why they're using these cloth bags.
So I would just add here that we have begun education efforts. We did have a recent screening of the movie Bag It, right before we had screening of the movie People for Bikes, right? Um, at the Athena Cinema as part of the Ohio University Sustainability Film Series, um, with the support of, um, different organizations, and with the support of Rural Action Zero Waste Project, I think, you know, we're equipped to do more education out in the community, and certainly, you know, we have the government channel that can do PSAs for us, hopefully, and other tools, um, that we can hopefully put, put to work. And we'll also have a, a six-month lead-in time, um, that will enable businesses to prepare and not be taken by surprise, as Alyssa mentioned. Um, so we will provide ample lead-in time, um, for preparation of signage, um, bag giveaways and that sort of thing. Member Paul?
I'd like to point out that this is not really rocket science, because there's already, um, one, you know, medium, the large grocery store that does this already in Athens, and I don't ever see anybody having any problem with it. So, um, at, I think one thing people will comment on, and that we have to have a good argument about, is the fact that, um, people are gonna see that the businesses are benefiting from keeping the money. There, I was, um, there's other places that use the money. Um, in, in Wales, it's 10p, which is like 22 cents, um, and it goes directly into a conservation fund that helps to do conservation activities and buys property. So, I think that's something, um, would be, um, would make sense for us to figure out how, if it's a, kind of a, a windfall, I think people might see as. Uh, I would, I would ask Aldi how much of a windfall it is for them, but they, that they have 6 cents for a paper bag and 12 cents for a plastic or the other way around, and it works great, yeah.
And to address that, that question, I have seen a lot of models where sometimes the fee is split between a bag, the retail establishment, and the city or county or whatever, um, government entity it may be. Um, in looking at that and considering that we are a small municipality with not a huge staff, I didn't want to create an administrative nightmare for our, um, city administration, um, and also thinking that, uh, the proposed ordinance does have language that limits the use of this fee, so that retailers would be, um, free to use it for giving away reusable bags, signage, um, about the, the reusable bags, and bring your own, that type of thing, as well as, um, training baggers how to bag in reusable bags, um, because it's often different. You can put more items, sometimes fewer items, just depends, um, as well as different education and outreach activities. So there would be some limitations, um, not just, you know, using it for anything. Mayor Patterson?
This is an intriguing piece of legislation. And one thing that I do have a little bit of concern over is the section that you have in here on record-keeping, um, because there is gonna have to be at least, until everyone gets on the same page with, with using reusables, there's gotta be some level of oversight in terms of accountancy, um, the way this is framed right now, to where, you know, at any time, um, the city should be able to go and review those records to make sure that the funding that's coming in from this, from these fees, is being used as you have laid out here in terms of, of, um, the retention of the collected monies and what those monies can be used for. Um, and I've never done a head count of how many retail stores we're talking about in the city of Athens. It's likely quite a few.
Sure.
Everything from CNE Grocery to Lowe's, um, and everyone in between. Uh, and this, this would also include, if I'm not mistaken, and help me out here, Farmer's Market, and who would be maintaining the accountancy for Farmer's Market?
Actually, I, I don't believe it would include, uh, the Farmer's Market at this point, but, um, that is something that's, I think, still open for discussion, um, because it's not included in this definition specifically as a retail establishment. But I think that, that is a gray area that does need to be defined, and I have had conversations with merchants at the Farmer's Market who are enthusiastic about this, not all of them, of course, um, and the manager of the Farmer's Market who is receptive to setting up a bag swap area at the market. And I know that many of the retailers there are already engaged in, in working to purchase compostable materials that may be from such materials as, as corn and other plant-based products.
You, you also have, in your definitions, uh, you know, chain store organizations? So you're talking the big box stores?
Right. As I mentioned earlier, um, this would be, this, there's a proposed phase-in period, so after the six months of, um, preparation, education, outreach, um, it would begin with the larger retail establishments, and the thinking there is that they have more of an infrastructure, they have other franchises in other cities to speak with and garner expertise from. How have you handled this in your city where an ordinance has been passed and that type of thing? Um, whereas the smaller establishments, uh, might need a little more time in getting prepared and implementing a, a change like this. So that's the, the thinking, uh, the rationale behind having a staggered start for the larger retailers and then later bringing in smaller establishments.
Okay, 'cause you do want to define store, uh, at the end of your definitions, which, I guess, what I was thinking is, you could have, certainly have Kroger, you could certainly have, uh, convenience stores, I would imagine fit into this category as well.
Right.
Um, but then you also have places such as, um, CNE-
Or Athens Bicycle Shop.
Or shirt, or Busy Day Market, you know, to where it's just a single store. I, I think, again, I think this is an interesting piece of legislation. I know this has been a long time coming, I know that there has been, I, you may have mentioned this already, but there were, uh, at least one, if not, I think there was more than one stakeholders' meetings where the representation from a lot of the, the major retailers in the city of Athens were there, um, and exploring what could be done. So, you know, my hats off to you, Member Cochrane, for all the work that you've put into bringing this forward. I just don't think there's some tweaking that needs to be done with this, obviously, for this to work. And my biggest concern is the accountancy and making sure-
Sure.
... that those who are collecting 10 cents, which adds up. You know, I just walked through Kroger the other day, getting groceries or whatever, and it, it was funny, it was just by happenstance, I'm looking at how many people are getting plastic bags, and, you know, it was probably a 10-to-1 ratio, you know, one person with a rec, reusable bag, and everyone else has clutching onto their plastic bags and hauling them out, so.
Hopefully, this can help us change that ratio.
I, I would like, yes, we're just viewing it for the first time tonight, about some tweaking in terms of the exemptions. I noticed that, um, New York City, for example, has an exemption in there for, um, people receiving job and family services assistance, as it were, and I know you have some language in there that they, that stores can provide that to them, but, you know, they're, they are, you know, the, the least among us in terms of that. They also had an exemption in there for pharmacies, when they have medications, and oftentimes they have to seal it, like, they staple it. So it'd be interesting to hear from the pharmaceuticals.
That's in this too, yes. Um, if you, if you read in, in the fine print, um, there are exemptions for, you know, any medications that are received in-
Okay.
-that is exempt from this. Anything that you receive to take your, your produce or something like that to the point of searches, that's exempted. You know, I think people worry, what about my steaks? You know, that, that's not gonna be connected to this ordinance. Um, you know, your goldfish at PetSmart, you know, we're not trying to take away that bag, certainly. Um, we don't want you to have to use your hands. So there are a lot of, a lot of things that are not effective. Dry cleaning bags, that's not going to be, you know, part of this ordinance. Um, and- And there is an exemption written in for any recipients of WIP or government funding, social service would be, the stores would be able to provide them with, at no cost. So we don't want this to be a hardship on folks. And it is also written into the ordinance that stores are welcome to offer them reusable, offer anyone reusable, you know, certainly during the trial period when they're rolling out a change like this, it'd be a great promotion to give away the, you know, store-branded bag to any customers for a day or so. But that, of course, would be up to a store.
And, and I heard what Member McGee said in terms of increasing the cost, but five cents is, is maybe a good starting point for gathering people in. Now you're all saying that 10 cents.
Remember, you know, I'm a child of Appalachian myself.
I think it should be five cents.
I received food stamps as a child myself, but when I was a child, we didn't have these ubiquitous plastic bags. They came around in 1977, and since then have become so prolific in some cities, they're referred to as the state flower or the official city flower. They've become like tumbleweeds in some cities. So, you know, we can, we can change this. Change is sometimes hard, but we can do it. I know there's another question, Dan.
Well, actually, I have two. One gets back to records. Would these, if we actually looked at the records that the stores are keeping, see if we're doing a good job, does that become part of the public record? Could a information request be sent in by a citizen and say, well, I want to see those too? I'll ask a question, I'm just asking.
If it's data we have to gather, that would be deemed a public record.
Well, it says income tax, but we don't share that. I mean, there are exceptions, what we can do. So I'm asking, is this far within that? Does anyone want to look at that?
I can, I can ask our law director about that question. Member Cochran?
I had another question.
It's a fee, though. It's not a tax.
Right, it is not a tax.
It's not a tax, I understand that.
And so, I mean, there are fees that someone could request to see as public record and find out, so.
Right. What was my other question?
Oh, shoot. Don't go on.
Senior moment. I skipped, I passed.
Member Pappy?
I too wanted to thank you. I know this has been a four-year-long effort, and we've discussed it several times. My guess is a lot of these questions could be answered in other communities that have already done this, that have fee schedules, that have an accounting practice, that these policies are probably already established. And so I think all these are good questions, but my guess is that there's already someplace that's doing that, and.
The really easy thing about the fee is that it's, you're just charging, it's like adding any new item in the grocery store. So that's their game, is, you know, adding that code for that new item. And so it's really simple, you know, at the grocery store side, I don't know, you know, the backend of, you know, maybe public records or whatever, but from the grocery side, it seems to be a very easy process.
And I would, I would also say, when it comes to the exemptions, I think we need to be very careful because, for instance, I noticed fast food restaurants and carryouts and those kinds of things, you know, I, I think as much as we can encourage, because they do come up with other alternatives to hand you, I noticed more and more paper bags coming from fast food restaurants and things like that. So again, there's a corporate model there somewhere, and every one of these chain restaurants exists in communities where there is already a ban or a, a fee. So they already understand how this works. And I think it's just a matter of tapping into their corporate office in terms of how to do that and, and putting it together for Athens. I don't think it's, for them, it's just a matter of contacting corporate. Now, our smaller businesses do need the outreach. There's no doubt about that. Our local small businesses, and I think our farmer's market should be doing it and have a, have a bag, you know, a trade-off.
I would note that, and now I've forgotten what I was going to say. Remember, Pappy?
Spreading.
It's one more question down here.
Thank you. Actually, my, my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, so my point was that although we have talked a lot about plastic here because the environmental effects are more greatly felt from the plastic bags, the language of this ordinance does include a fee on any single-use disposable bag or carryout bag. So it is not exclusively on the plastic bags, but on any bag. Although it is preferable by any environmentalist's judgment to use paper because it is more readily recyclable, more readily compostable, and comes from a renewable resource rather than petroleum, we are not exclusively listing plastic in this ordinance.
Thanks for all the work on this, and we'll hear more than, not next week, but perhaps the two weeks after that for the first reading of the ordinance. So we have a little bit of time to work on the details of the reports and record-keeping. All right, we'll move forward with a topic of income tax increase. I might mention that at our last Finance and Personnel Committee meeting chaired by Councilmember Reisner, this topic did come up, but also has come up under previous mayor's administration, Mayor Paul Wile, who mentioned this towards the end of last year as he was leaving city office. And currently, we have a 1.65% income tax, 1.4 of which of this goes to the general fund, 0.1 goes to street rehab, 0.1 goes to the community center, and we did have the one levy that expired in 2015, and we now have the new levy that has come in on the community center. And then we have 0.05 for community center operations, so this totals 1.65%. And I'll turn some of the first presentation of information over to the mayor, and then we'll open it up to council members for comments and questions.
Thank you. I've provided a couple graphs to the council members, and I'm more than willing to get them out to anyone who's interested. The two graphs are what I've put together representing some of the things that we're facing in the city right now. The first one I want to draw your attention to is the local government funding. I mentioned this in Finance and Personnel on Wednesday, but the local government funding, which comes from, from the state, what you're looking at is essentially, you know, 11 years, really, of data, of the financials. And within the first four years, from 2005 to about 2009, we were receiving a little over $800,000, but from that point on, it steadily decreased almost exponentially to where we're currently, in 2015, what we received was $350,000, give or take, in terms of the local government funding. So that's been dropping precipitously. And, you know, who knows what will continue, but if you, anyone wants to look into a crystal ball and kind of figure out what we're looking at in the, in the future, it's likely to go away at some point. Don't know that for a fact, but just looking at, at the drop in that amount. The other thing that I want to point out to you is the OU enrollments. And I bring this up just so people can kind of think about the fact that especially from September, August, September through May, the city's population significantly increases back in 1986, which is when the, the income tax went, the last change in the income tax, which went to, as was mentioned, 0.04 for income tax alone. It was a little more than, or just under 15,000 students in 1986. Now we're up to over 23,000 students in OU. And the reason for bringing this up is, you know, not singling out the students, but when you look at that population growth and very little change in police, fire, code, office, a number of our, our services, they're not matching that level of growth yet, you know, if anything, they're being stretched out much thinner year after year after year. And I mentioned this a minute ago, the income tax in the city of Athens has been flat since 1986. There were two years where there was a bump up, but they worked for street improvements or special projects where it went up to, went up and then went down again after a year, I believe it was 2002, and then again in 2011. Also worth mentioning, because President Isley, you just mentioned this, and that is that 0.1% is for street rehab. That will also sunset, I believe, in 2020. That's not something that will keep going on forever. That's likely to, will lose that 0.1%. So what is being proposed is a 0.2% increase in the income tax. We would go from 1.65 to 1.85. To put that in perspective, in terms of some of our sister cities, if you want to call them that, places like Kent or Oxford, Ohio, their current income taxes are, are 0.2. So they're looking at, they have a 2% income tax associated with them and have for a while. I looked through a number of other comparable cities, and they were, were give or take within that range, anywhere from, from 1.7, again, up to 2.0 in terms of the income tax. The cities, the city has also grown in size, and in a lot of cases, it was kind of through Ohio Vice Code, kind of mandated that we take over things such as, as the West Union Cemetery, which is very expensive for us to, to maintain and manage. Our deputy service safety director essentially kind of serves as a sextant for that cemetery, so he has to allocate time to that in terms of, of taking care of the grounds. Again, the city has to take care of those grounds. It also has a mausoleum. The only, I, if I'm not mistaken, the only mausoleum in a cemetery in the city of Athens, I don't know that east, the State Street Cemetery has a mausoleum, but this one does, which has already proved to be expensive in terms of maintaining the roof on that structure. So that's increased. You're all aware that we've also expanded in terms of real estate with things like the Hope Property, which we're preserving, yet the bike pass for runs through there. We've also acquired, were given, Gwandy Property over on the south side of the city, that was, was deeded to the city. We picked up Daler Property. All of these, again, are for hopefully enhancing our recreational activities in the city, but they're going to, you know, they're properties that we have to maintain and will be maintaining as time rolls forward. Annexation. We've annexed a lot of property over the past 10 years to include, you know, the Far East State Street properties out by Holzer Clinic, the State Highway Patrol barracks, as well as other properties out in that area. We've also annexed some smaller parcels. Some of these smaller parcels, we, as an example, and this is where I'm going to have to reach out to you, Member Fall, because I don't remember the name of the street, but it's the one that's beyond Longview Heights, where we annexed a couple properties out there just recently. With that annexation, it's, it, now we provide services, so fire and police will go out to those particular properties as well.
Old Coach?
Not Old Coach.
I don't, that's the one that's beyond the green property.
Yeah, so there's.
University Estates.
And University Estates, thank you. As well as Receiving University Estates. So, so there's been a lot of growth, yet, you know, when you look at our police department that is, is, you know, vitally stretched, and our fire department as well, is being stretched without increases in staffing and those, our litter control, you know, that, luckily, the litter is coming from a different funding stream, it can come from our garbage fund. However, if we were in, you know, think about code, just the code enforcement officers who are doing, looking at, at rental units and so, you know, 500,000, or 500, 5,000 of our housing stock are rental units, and I'm being conservative with that number. And with those, a lot of their time is being tied up in inspecting those alone, and there's a lot of other things that need to be done aside from just doing apartment, rental unit inspections, other things that can be done. You know, I know, Council, you hear these as much as I do, the, the cry for keeping up our green spaces, things like the grass in the roundabout, the gateways coming into the city, and a, a income tax increase like this could allow us to do a couple different things creatively. We could either contract with, with a landscaping company to, to keep up with all of those, or we can hire more personnel to sit there and further support efforts to keep our city looking beautiful and attractive. I know that we could certainly use some people to help out with tag, and all the, the great peddling that goes on, and if we had more support through a levy like this or an income tax increase, things like that would be possible. I could go on and on, but I'm going to.
So I'll open it up for questions and comments. Yes, Councilmember Fall?
This is when I get on my soapbox to remind everybody what has been going on in Columbus. Not only has the government, local government funds collapsed, basically, as you can see from the graph, it precipitately go down. There has also been the removal of the estate tax, which used to benefit us. We've been having, we've just had a change in income tax filing and collecting requirements that the state has imposed upon us, which will cost us money. There's probably be other changes in the next biennial budget that we have no idea how they're going to impose their ax on the local governments. Athens is not the only municipality that has been looking at increasing local taxes, and basically what is happening is that the state is taking, they still collect the income tax at the state level. It used to be shared with the local level through the local government funds. Now they don't do that. They give the tax rebate, they give a tax cut to, to people who tend to be wealthier. So what's happening is the taxes are being passed on to the local level. And if people are upset about local taxes or local levies, they need to let Columbus know because this is the only thing that we can do responsibly besides letting the services and the properties of the city just decline into oblivion. And it's, it's something that Columbus needs to know because we're not the only ones. Athens, the only, we don't get property tax, so getting University Estates didn't really benefit us. People say, oh, look at all that property there, and you get that tax. You don't get property tax, we don't get sales tax, that's the county. So this is our sole tax. So this is needed, and I, and if people are upset, call up the governor.
Thank you. Councilmember Reisner?
I just wanted to want to be clear is that the administration is not asking council to raise taxes. What you're asking council to do is to approve a referendum ballot initiative that the voters will then vote on to decide whether or not they want to raise their taxes.
It's a great clarification. That's exactly what, what we're.
So ultimately, it'll be up to the voter out there. They have to decide, do I want to tax myself? And, you know, that's, that's democracy right there. They're going to have to make up that decision, cast their vote, one way or the other. You know, do they want a city that is well-run, clean, nice, everything looking fine, or they want one that's, they'll start to get a little fright on the edges pretty soon. So, that's all I have to say about it.
Councilmember Butler?
Thank you. And thank you for acknowledging that clarification. And for history's sake, we did receive support for this from the previous administration. Mayor Wile did acknowledge that he'd been crunching the numbers, and at the end of his administration, his term, felt that this was prudent and worthwhile for us to explore and look at. I support us moving forward and offering something for the voters to consider and letting the voters decide. I think that it's, it makes sense, it's fiscally responsible. I've been approached by citizens of all ages that have said that they think we should be doing more and would support such an income tax raise, knowing that the services would be providing more. So I think if we can say and spell out exactly what we're doing with this proposed income tax, then I, I think that the citizens would support such an endeavor, especially if they know what the services are going towards. Another fee that wasn't mentioned is the state used to offer an impact fee to college towns and university towns, and that amount of money has also been on the decline from the state. We know how much Halloween costs us, and that's just one event. We haven't even gone into all the other events that we've been. We haven't even gone into all the other events that we've been impacted by because we're a college town. So I believe that amount, Debbie can help remind me, it may have been as high as 60, 70, 80,000 at one point? Does that sound correct? And now I believe it's as little as 20, 30 maybe? So again, that's, that's substantial over time. Meanwhile, everything costs more, so we're all aware of that, that what it cost to run a town in 1986 is way different than what it cost to provide services today in 2016, whether it's the purchase of salt for our roads or asphalt, or whether it's services, repairs, whatnot, everything, gasoline, things cost more today than they did in 2016. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Patterson.
Sorry, than they did in 1986. In 1986, correct, thank you.
I'm glad you brought those up. I do want to share another piece of information that I had asked our city engineer, Andy Stone, to give me some sense since 2005, you know, how much money on average was used or allocated through the 19% the city council approves to come out of, to go towards the street fund, out of the income tax split. And he said it was about $325,000 annually that goes into that, indeed be used for annual paving, as well some other things. Certainly he's done a fantastic job of going after grant funding as well, but bear in mind that grant funding is a one-time deal. It's not something that goes on, and that fluctuates wildly up and down in terms of being able to, what, how much can be garnered using granting. But with this, with a .2% increase, it would essentially bring in an additional $285,000 annually for street paving, but not just street paving, it would also be traffic lights and lamps and, you know, everything else. So if you kind of cut that in half, it would increase his ability to schedule and forecast street repaving by, increasing it by 30%. So the street tour that council goes on, as I go on as well, when we're looking to see what streets need to be improved, that, that can be increased by 30%, because that's another thing that I know council, because hears this, I used to hear it, I still hear it now, is, you know, roads and streets need to be improved, and there's potholes and whatnot. So this could certainly stretch that a lot further on annual cycle to be able to repave them to where, you know, we can be looking at a mix every eight years to where we're almost coming back and redoing where we could have potholes that develop again in something that's become eight years old. So it gets us, it gets us on track with street paving alone. And again, that's not even counting other things that deferred maintenance, basically, capital improvements that need to be done in the city, and there's a lot of them. You know, we're all sitting in a building that was built in 1867, and we've got repairs that we need to be doing on the roof, and it's, at this point in the game, it's kind of pick and choose, what, what are we gonna do, which is nothing new, but it's, something like this would certainly help in being able to make some much-needed improvements throughout the city.
And if I can ask you to clarify, so you're talking about the, the income tax right now is 1.65, and you're talking about increasing it to?
1.85.
1.85, so .2, the .2%, and your estimate is, is that it would generate an additional $285,000?
No, 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 I'm sorry, that would be, you know, into EPW for, for street repair, or not street repairs, it would be going into the, the street rehab, the street fund.
Do you have an estimate of what total increase would be on the income tax, the total dollars?
It would be right around $1.3 million annually.
Okay. And just a couple of clarifying points. The city of Athens, the auditor's website does have information. We're talking about income tax, and so there are sources of income for families that are non-taxable. And so this would not be putting taxes on capital gains, on dividends, on interest, on pensions, on social security benefits, on unemployment benefits, or on welfare benefits. And that's just 10 of probably 20 items listed that are non-taxable. So just if people are having concerns about what of their income might be taxed, that, going to that auditor's website is really helpful. The other thing that I wanted to clarify process-wise, that if I'm understanding what you're saying, as Councilmember Reisner pointed out, what council is being asked to do by the city's administration is authorize, pass an ordinance to authorize the city to submit this item for the citizenry so that it could be placed on the fall ballot. So that would be for the November general election. And if I'm, I haven't looked at exact dates from, at which point the Board of Elections needs to receive this certification, but I think what we're being asked is, if it has to be to the Board of Elections in August, you're asking council to take a look at this, to consider it, and to consider passing it before our July 1 recess. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So it would be a three-reading ordinance? And, and then a three-reading resolution? So we're talking about six votes that would be necessary between now and June 30 for this? So we would probably be looking at special sessions. Yes, Councilmember Pappy?
So administratively, I, I think that for our voters, it's really important that what the 1.3 million, how it would be broken down, what that would be spent on, I think it would be important, rather than just a blanket income tax increase. I, I think that we're at the stage, you know, some people feel like they're being nickelled and dimed, whether it's new fees, whether it's increases in garbage rates, whatever it is. I think it would be really important in the writing of this as to where administratively you feel the greatest needs are, that this money, I don't, I don't know if that's possible, but rather than just a general fund statement.
Councilmember Pappy, so you're thinking of something maybe perhaps like that with the street levy, fact sheet information, here are the kinds of things that when we pass that back in 2011 that we could be doing. And I will mention that you are mandated, or not mandated, but we are governed by a split in the income tax. So we could be doing the math, I'm saying, of this increase, but right now, and there are several ways of explaining it, but basically, of the income tax, 15% comes off the top. And, and the split as it is right now is 73%, after that 15% cut off the top, 73% goes to general, 19% goes to the street fund, 5% goes to recreation, 2% goes to capital, 1% goes to transportation, supporting our Athens transit now. So that's a split that we are.
Already.
Already authorized to do. And so if you do an income tax increase, you're gonna have more revenues coming in, but you're gonna be governed by that percentage split that council has authorized. Occasionally, that has shifted some. I think it was two years ago for the first time that we added the transportation.
We did.
Percentage point that gives about 80 to 90,000 a year to transportation. So we can make, I think administration can make some projections like you're suggesting, Councilmember Pappy, but within those guidelines. Are there other questions or comments right now? Yes, Councilmember Butler.
My, my guess is, and I don't want to put words in Councilmember Pappy's mouth, but my guess is that hearing something like this will provide X number of police officers or X number of firefighters, or is that my, am I guessing correctly?
Well, I just think that the voters kind of need to know, we had a recent ballot initiative where there's been a lot of discussion and conversation over the last couple of years, and I just think if we are gonna move in this direction, I mean, it's, it's clear that the information and the monies that we have, you know, and the lack of monies that we're receiving indicate that we need some further revenue. I mean, that seems very clear. I just think it needs to be very clear to the voters. I think that will be better for everyone to swallow.
Any other comments from the administration on this?
We believe that the percentages should stand as they are.
Can you repeat those one more time?
Sure.
It's, 15% is off the top, and of the remaining 85%, it's split as 73% to general, 19 to street, 5 to recreation, 2 to capital improvements, and then 1 to transportation.
And where does that 15% go?
The 15% is actually the calculation for the top, where that goes to street rehab, community center, and community center operations. It's a different way of explaining it, but that, that top 15% is designated right off the top for those three funds.
Because they have the, they have levies that are on there.
Correct.
Right, right, those are existing levies.
Right, correct.
Are bringing in, so you have to parse it that way.
Right. And I guess I would advise against, you know, I'm gonna hire X number of police officers or X number of firefighters. The idea here is to be able to provide the service, and provide the service so we're not a little afraid on the edges, as Councilwoman Reisner stated, and improve the services that are to be provided.
Councilmember Cochran.
Thank you. I, I appreciate the clarification with the breakdown in percentages, because, you know, coming in tonight, thinking about this issue, I am cognizant of, you know, as a citizen and a voter, I'm happy to support an increase in, in taxes if it means better services. But when we're asking folks to, you know, ante up and, and give us a little more of their paycheck every month, we do need to be able to provide some accountability, and I, I think it's helpful to understand that while we may not be saying we're going to build a building with this money, or we're going to hire X number of police officers with this money, it is helpful to know that this will drastically improve our capability to provide better annual street paving, and that is a big deal to our, to our constituents and our residents. And to provide a better level of services, because we do know that across the city, you know, many things are neglected. The restrooms in our parks, of course, that's, that's a different levy, so I shouldn't muddy the waters, but many areas that could use a little extra. So I hope that folks will, you know, dig in, look at the budget, look at, you know, where we are spending money and, and how those dollars could be allocated without necessarily needing the level of detail of, you know, it's not an extra fire truck per se, but it's a little extra for everybody, which makes a big difference.
You know, the other, the other difficult thing to do is to try to, if we're gonna itemize, which we're not going to, you know, it is, I mean, I think it was stated well that we're talking in, enhancing the services, because when you look at what our city engineer has to do, you know, year to year with things like, you know, being able to supplement, you know, storm, or being able to supplement, you know, sewer or water, and some of that's coming out of other funding lines, to be able to effectively do things, and we're currently having to pick and choose, you know. Council's aware of that in terms of what gets done, what's affordable, and this certainly will change that dynamic to where now projects, in terms of, of the city's expenses to get these projects done, and the service that it's providing to our community as a whole, you know, is, is being, is increasing, so.
I, I would just add that if you read the local newspaper this Sunday, there were several articles related to tax on different properties for the school, and then there was another large article about how the state legislature is changing the funding for farmland, and how it's designated, and how the different taxes, and our county auditor and one of the commissioners testified up in Columbus regarding that matter. So as, as Member Fall mentioned about the way that the local funding models are changing, whether it's schools, whether it's county taxes and services or city taxes, the trickle-down effect is not happening for us, and the trickle's getting smaller. And so we are having to have these more difficult conversations about how to maintain services for our communities.
Yes, Councilmember McGee.
Thank you, President Isley. If I could just stress one thing to the administration, that citizens I hear from on a, on a regular basis are quite discontented with what they think is the tendency of politicians and the city or the state or whatever to waste their tax money. You have certain projects that are coming up in the future, such as a Union Street renovation, which I think may be a great idea, but will of course take some money. But I think the, the real thing that you absolutely have to focus on, and I'm not sure you're giving it enough money, is the street repairs, because that's the daily thing that your citizen sees on a daily basis. It's the thing that destroys their cars when they hit those potholes. It's a danger to other people. And again, if you're not really making some progress on that, so that the citizens can say, well, my tax money is at least being spent well now, so I can give some more money because it'll be spent better. If you're not doing that, I, I think you might have a real battle on your hands to get that passed, because I, I think there's a frustration right now in the city where, where people see roads not being repaired till, streets not being repaired till July, August, and that's, takes a lot of, lot of toll on some of these cars, especially the older cars.
We face this every spring. Asphalt plants are closed, you know, we do cold patch, then we go to hot mix. A few years back, when city engineer became the city engineer and the, and the departments were merged, we've pretty much made a commitment to ourselves that we're just not gonna lay down asphalt, and we're going to look at what infrastructure needs repaired. Too often, we lay down asphalt, we used to, and then the water line breaks. So that concerted effort has what's led us, I believe, to, to very smartly attack these different repairs, and we've had some major improvements. And I know that may not mean my street, this little stretch of my street on the west end, but we attempt to do that through the annual paving. You know, the, between the bridges that you'll see this year is going to be a beautiful project when we get that done, if you look at what just happened on Richland South, but that took years because of the trickling in effect of, and trying to get the grants and get everything together, so. Perhaps we're not reaching out enough to, to tell our story, and then also to hear back from the citizens on where they see that there are deficiencies in, in that, so. But once again, we will be doing annual paving in the summer, but that's typically how it's done. We'd like to do everything between May 2nd now and August 15th in order to try to align with at least amount of vehicles still traveling our roadways, so.
Okay. Councilmember Fall, we'll have a few more comments to kind of close this up.
I think that at some point, when Andy is not doing anything, he should just put back in the envelope of how much it would cost to pave everything, because I'm sure it's gonna be a whole lot more taxes. Second of all, what is the major outlay of our, of our tax money and its personnel? It's that, the personnel are what makes the city run and, and function as it is, and I think that we've been kind of, been on a very skeleton crew from, you know, code, police, fire, all the way up. And so I think that, that looking at this sort of thing is really important, because that's, it's just not, that's when we say services, we're talking about people providing those services, so.
That's a good point, and I think the percentage is what, close to 80% of our general fund? 75, 80, 75% is personnel? So, you're right. Okay, other comments, questions from council members? All right, then, as we outlined the process earlier, if this is to move the Board of Elections in August for citizens to consider it the general election, it needs to move through a three-reading ordinance, and then a three-reading resolution, and time-wise, the clerk of council has informed us, we would need to start the first reading on that ordinance next week. And then do we have any miscellaneous items for committee of the poll? If not, we'll move on to the City and Safety Services Committee with Councilmember Butler chairing.
Thank you, President Isley. I'm still digesting all the information you've been listening to. I believe the first item on our agenda this evening is the handheld water meter readers and the disposal of those. I believe it's just two handheld meter readers, and this will allow the administration to replace that equipment and trade it in for the newer handhelds. Does that sound correct? Any, any information you want to offer on the newer, the newer system?
Just that the value or the cost of these, these meter reader handhelds are $5,382. Just that the value or the cost of these, these meter reader handhelds are $5,382.00.
That's our trade-in value to reduce the cost.
And this comes from a proprietary fund?
Two.
Okay.
Thank you. And then I believe, is there any more comment on that from anyone?
I would like to request an emergency clause, because we have the quote already to buy, you passed a ordinance, I think it was 3816, authorizing the purchase. I just looked my hands at there was a trade-in value that we'd be receiving.
Sounds good.
For property to dispose of, so.
Super. And then I believe the next item, which is not on our agenda, so under miscellaneous, would be to authorize the City Service Safety Director to purchase $50,000 worth of solar-powered recycling refuse compacting containers. And this would be out of our garbage fund, which we heard and discussed last week, is amply supplied, it's okay, it's a strong fund, there's money, resources available there. We did receive, we were all present for a presentation from the company Big Belly, and they described the process of the product that they have, so this, that kind of opens our eyes and gives us an idea of what's out there. This allows the Mayor's Office to begin to look into similar such products and to spend up to about $50,000 worth. And again, there's no courtside, there's no Court Street presence of recycling containers, so this would, this would be a push in that direction. I do think this is a good starting point for us, and we continue, we can continue to look at other recycling efforts in and around Court Street. Move in, move out is always really tricky, and I, and again, we're all learning, this is the first time we've all been in this moment on this planet at this time, so it's an opportunity for us to tweak things and get better. Mayor's Office or Council, President Nisland? Sorry.
Just a point of clarification, but I believe you said something to the effect of purchasing, this is, this is for a lease agreement, so this is, this is to enter into a lease agreement, which includes, you know, annual maintenance on these, being cleaned twice a year, in the service on the telemetry within these devices that will alert us as to when these are full, and so, so everything that you heard during the presentation is part of that lease package for, I believe it was roughly 24 units that would be strategically placed up and down Court Street to replace our 50-some-odd current open receptacles that don't have lids and...
So I was just in New York City over the weekend and saw several of these, and curiously, I was walking around, not looking at the buildings, but the Big Belly machines, and one of the things that I noticed right away was they were clean around the actual boxes, unlike ours currently in downtown Athens where they are very, you know, not very clean at all. So that was the first thing I noticed on these. A few of them had graffiti on them, but it sounds like we asked that question when they were here.
With art.
And are we allowed to do our own wraps? So this is for one year?
Yes.
Right.
We actually anticipate the cost being less, because it's going to be halfway through the year, but we'd like to continue it and expand it to the parks area as well.
Councilmember Cottis.
So is it $50,000 for the remainder of this fiscal year? I mean, what do we talk, is the lease agreement per month, or is it per year? How does?
It's annual. It's a, correct. It would be an annual lease agreement of, of up to $50,000 a year. I mean, that's, you know, to be negotiated with.
So have they provided us quotes yet? Okay, so they still haven't come forward?
Yeah, about $2,000 per unit, you know?
Okay.
That's with the, that's with the maintenance agreement and everything else, and they will, you know, they will bring a maintenance tech in to inspect them, but also if they need to be repaired, someone will come in and repair them as well.
And we're, and it was 24 units? They were recommending 24 units placed?
We were, we had scoped out 24 units. We being Deputy Service Safety Director and I, thinking where can, where would and could these go, and we kind of landed on 24 units. But that can be modified as well, to fit with, with the agreement at $50,000.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Pappy, followed by Councilmember Fall.
So the units, I think, are each separate unit. As I noticed in the city I was just in, there were maybe four units together, and I think one was for one item, or, and I'm not sure how that all works. We have single streams, so maybe, I don't know what that means. I think we probably need a little clarification on units, but I'm thinking one box. Or is it one, when they say unit, that's one?
Yeah, what we were speculating on was one unit being, being trash, landfill trash, and recycled.
Exactly.
So it's one unit is both.
That's one unit.
And they're, right, so they're both side by side, they're physically attached to each other, but those are what we're talking about.
And then we had a pretty long conversation last week when we had, passed the ordinance for the purchase of the recycling bins. So I think just for clarification to the community is that when you say that our, this, this fund is healthy, that's from, you're talking about the Waste Management Fund. And so that is a healthy fund, and that comes from the fees on your utility bill for trash and recycling.
Wait, we're talking about, about 760, the garbage fund is what we're talking about, which, you know, currently $1.2 million in that particular.
And we have a, we have a contract with our Solid Waste Management Group, which is so much per year, and we pay that, out of that fund as well. So I just think it's important when people understand this, that when you say that fund is healthy, that we're able to meet all our current, current demands, and that of course, with this increased recycling, the tipping fees will be less, so there's going to be some balancing act that goes on with those fees. And then I think the additional on the utility is our solid waste litter person, there's a fee there as well.
Correct, that's correct.
I think it's a dollar, but...
That's correct.
Councilmember Fall?
When the people came to give the presentation, they did talk about how, and I think this is true, when we look at costs, we need to look at the benefits and the cost savings that the city will accrue from the usage of these, because I think that they really did show in the other towns that they worked in, that they are a cost saver, because you're not getting, having to do it, have them, like every day, we have it six days a week, and hopefully if we cut back, that will, that will be great, because not only is it, you know, less cost per, for people going and actually doing the work, but that means that the trucks aren't going uptown as much, which I think would be great. So I think that there's a benefit that people also have to realize with this too, that cost savings.
Thank you. Councilmember McGee, sorry, followed by Councilmember Cochran.
Thank you, Councilmember Butler. I do want to emphasize, and I'm not necessarily opposed to it by, by any reason, I like the ideas. I've, I am concerned about the timing of asking for this expense, especially, and I understand the two are, are separate as far as the funds are coming, I mean, I thank you for pointing that out to me last time, but I think that the citizens and people who are going to be approached for a tax increase are going to see expense, 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 and they're going to be asking themselves what is going on here, if it's $50,000 a year for what they'll see as trash cans or recyclable cans on Court Street. And I think that's just something you have to understand, there's going to be a lot of perhaps misinformation conveyed, which can hurt you in the long run, I think, if you're going for the income tax increase. So again, I like the presentation, I like the fact that the fund itself is very healthy and has some money, but I just think you need to be somewhat wary as far as perhaps your timing in approving this kind of situation right now.
I understand your concern, but again, we're still looking at a proprietary funding line that is there, and it exists, but that, those monies can only be used, as I explained last week, they can only be used at, at trash, garbage-related activities, which is why we do fund our litter enforcement officer, you know, off, out of that account line, it's fitting, because that's what his, that individual's job is to do. But the garbage fund, as you know, I mean, that garbage fund can't be used for doing some of the other things that this income tax can do. So, so I hear your concern, but I also, I can't stress that enough, so maybe this is a good time for anyone who's out there watching, that they know that this, the garbage fund is proprietary to garbage activities, and that's all it can be used for, so it can't be used for anything else. It's, you know, with it having the funding that it does, and it is because of, as you know, the, the garbage fees, the recycling fees, so it's all going in there, and hopefully someday, an operator, operations like this will help offset, so we're sending less, and our tipping fees, as Member Fall was just mentioning, will go down, you know, if we can get more people to throw their stuff into the recycle side of these bins on Court Street. My big thing is, you know, with the efforts of trying to enhance the attractiveness of the city as well as the uptown area, I think this is a step in the right direction that's going to keep, you know, a lot of the blown litter that we see by having these non-contained trash cans that we currently do on Court Street, it'll certainly cut down on the unsightliness that we see of stuff blowing all over, and hopefully if we can get plastic bags pushed through, that those will go away too, but this is just one more effort to, to enhance the attractiveness of our city. You know, we only get one first impression, and I'm hoping that this is something that will help that, so.
And if I may add, we're going to have to continue to operate the city, so there'll be other requests coming forward.
You'll have to spend some money.
The appropriation ordinance is always, you know, and this one was made, you know, by the previous mayor, and you start the year, but there are changes all throughout the year in terms of whatever project's next or an enhancement like this.
Thank you. Councilmember Cochran.
Thank you. I think one question that we might ask is, and I am a fan of the Big Belly, a fan of uniform recycling receptacles, a fan of anything that helps us with our waste reduction efforts, but I think that one question that citizens might ask at some point is, if our garbage fund is so robust, why are my fees not going down? And one thing that I would suggest is that we look more closely at and work on implementing more of a pay-as-you-throw fee structure, so that if I'm not putting my, my trash can out every week, because it's all going to the recycling, and I only have this small bag of trash, and I'm going to save it up for the month, then I should be seeing a savings and paying less than my neighbor next door who might not be making such an effort. And then when my neighbor sees the savings that I'm, that's occurring for me, they'll be encouraged to throw away less, send less to the landfill, and that will help our waste reduction efforts. And I would also like to see some of this robust garbage fund going toward waste reduction efforts, including education and outreach around, you know, such issues as the single-use bag campaign.
Thank you, Councilmember Cochran.
Yeah, as I said, we could certainly explore some things, just keep in mind too, that I, don't be surprised if sometime in the near future EPA doesn't just come out and sit there and exponentially increase tipping fees to where it could really draw down on what there is in that garbage fund, just by essentially, you know, talk about pay-to-play, you're paying big time when, with your tipping fees, if they start to go up, and, you know, that could very easily happen to where, as they're trying to get people to stop throwing away everything, at least putting it in landfills, the tipping fees go.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Cottis.
Yes, so my, my new question that I have is, is the garbage fund growing faster, larger than what the cost of what these would, this, this system would, would cost? Or is it something that if we, if we implement this system, are we going to start to see the fund shrink? I mean, is it, or?
Well, there's an additional cost to that fund, but we'll watch it, we watch all these funds carefully.
Is there, is there a dollar amount that it has kind of grown every year, or?
I could look at that, I could look at some trends over the past five years and see if it's, if there's a steady upward trend or what, what's going on. But if it was, I mean, even if it stayed flat, and we're talking $50,000 coming out of a $1.3 million fund, we're, it's going to have a minimal impact on the funding line in its totality.
Correct me, this is $50,000 for this, this year, I mean, what would, what would the request be for a full fiscal year?
No, no, a whole fiscal year would be $50,000.
Okay, all right.
So year after year after year, and...
Okay. I was thinking it was just the six, the remaining six months that we had. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? I do appreciate the comments that were made, and I appreciate Councilmember Cochran acknowledging the challenges that exist there in, in funding or how to pay for this, or being fined, or, you know, the amount that we pay for home, and whether or not someone's offering less trash, or it's, I have been approached by citizens on the West Side with fixed incomes and the challenges that exist with this particular amount on their bills, but I think, again, if we're using the, the resources responsibly, I think people will see that, and it's beneficial to the community. Any other comments? Miscellaneous, I, the only thing I was going to mention briefly, or if the mayor wants to acknowledge, we did receive an email regarding the fire department's practice runs at, at Bro House at the university. So I think it's beneficial that the community be aware of that.
I'm glad that you brought that up. Sure, it'll, it'll be a training exercise for our firefighters, not unlike the one that I just attended last Saturday up at, in Reynoldsburg with what's called Feel the Heat, but it will be a live fire on one of the buildings down there on College Green, not on College Green, on South Green.
Yeah.
And it'll be Saturday, and I believe again on Sunday, they'll be doing some training, certainly on Saturday. There'll be notices, I know that will continue to go out about this, and in talking with Chief Reimer, it's not going to, no one's going to see large black billowing smoke anywhere in the city. He said it would be much like what I experienced up in Reynoldsburg, which is really kind of a light colored smoke, because a lot of them, there's no textiles, the room is stripped down. They've gone through their EPA clearance to be able to do this, but it's going to be a multi-agency training exercise here in the city of Athens that is going to have firefighters from, from across the state, really, that are going to come down, and it gives them, affords them a, a live fire practice to sit in, you know, go in and, and attack a live fire.
You'll actually see activity beginning on Friday.
Yeah, Friday.
This is the 14th and 15th, is that correct? You said the 14th and 15th of May? That sound correct?
It's this weekend, but it's my understanding they'll be staging and preparing on Friday.
On 13th, it'll start, yeah, the staging, so there'll be enough tick and traffic of firefighters from throughout the state.
Isn't the human solar-powered that is on Mill Street on what day?
Saturday is the drag race that goes down South Green.
They have a lot of assisting agencies really close.
Just in case there's a fire.
In case any of the human-powered vehicles slip up in flames.
President Nisland?
So is this, will this be visible from the highway?
Yes.
And the reason I ask is, people driving down the highway, worried, see an emergency, want to feel compelled to phone it in, that's something I would do. Are we going to have signs posted like we do, the university has for Move-In Day, saying use exit so-and-so, or we could say control burn on campus?
We're working on it. ODOT, most of their VMS boards are already busy, because it's highway construction season. We have our own, working with the university to have at least one out there on the highway.
Great.
Also use the Richland Avenue VMS when you come across the roundabout. But the first word anybody's going to see is going to be fire, so we're trying to... But the first word anybody's going to see is going to be fire, so we're trying to, you know, get...
Training exercise.
Exercise, exercise to be completely lost.
And it's one of the dormitories, correct?
It is.
Correct, it's being demolition, demolition. Is there any other miscellaneous from the Mayor's Office?
I failed to bring something under Committee of the Whole, so I don't know how to address an appropriation ordinance.
We can temporarily revisit Committee of the Whole for one more miscellaneous item. Okay. Two?
Sort it.
Okay.
Two?
Two, in two minutes?
We do.
Let's do CDBG.
CDBG.
Okay.
Again, City Engineer Andy Stone has kind of come up with three possibilities. Jefferson Avenue repaving is one for the CDBG, West Union sidewalk expansion, this is from Herald to Hawk Hocking and Dana Bike Way on the north side of the street.
That's the...
Right.
Okay.
Along the Highland Hotel area, et cetera, VA Clinic. And then the third is to supplement the Kimes reservoir repairs, because the cost is going to cost more than the allocated monies. So those are the three in the lineup.
And again, under community development block grant funds, you receive up to $75,000 annually under the formula, usually results in about $68,000. We're using it for Franklin Avenue this year. So the smaller projects tend to fit in well.
So, am I understanding right that you're considering all three of those?
Those are the three that have been put forward. If you were to ask us for reference, we would choose one or two.
Right.
There has to be public hearing.
And so we need public hearings prior to our...
There could be other suggestions.
And other suggestions could come forward in those.
Prior to our next business meeting, regular session, or?
Has to benefit LMI, so citywide works, or specific areas within the city, so.
Okay.
For example, the West End.
Okay.
And as Service Safety Director just mentioned, other projects, other things could be in this mix, too, but these are the ones that have popped up, that are probably most warranted in the city.
Okay. Any other item?
In appropriation ordinance, there's several items on here, you know, $11,000 from the general fund for the HVAC improvements, upgrades in the conference room, the treasurer's office, and then the IT server room. That in particular, the air conditioning unit in there is not in the best of shape, and we certainly don't want that to be a facility that overheats.
In addition, I think we've all had meetings in the front conference room in the summer where you can't hear. If you either get to Swelter and listen to each other, or turn on the air conditioner and not be able, so it should be those nice singular units.
And these would be, these would be much more efficient units, the split units that we're thinking, much like the one that I have in my office right now, more efficient unit, quiet, you don't even hear the thing going, which fits with the perfection improvements that were spelled out some years ago. $18,000 from the general fund for professional services to cover employee absences is coming out of TC 300 for Code. $500 from the general fund for the purchase of a tool set, again, this is for the Code Office, things that they feel strongly that they need, you know, not only for down there, but when they're out on-site inspecting and whatnot. $6,000, $60,000 from the garbage fund as well, from 760, for a second solid waste control inspector. Speaking of solid waste.
That second position that had been authorized at the beginning of the year but has not been filled, did not have funding in the salary line, so this will allow us to advertise and seek candidates.
Very much needed.
And then police.
Yep. And then section two on here, that the appropriation ordinance 120-15 be amended to decrease the general fund police, TC 100 by $22,500, and to increase TC 500 by $15,000, and TC 200 by $7,500, and to increase the total appropriation for set amounts.
APD would then be allowed to purchase a new vehicle for their criminal investigations unit, repurpose the old one, and also buy Sams, ours, you know, and upgrade the Sams with battery-powered solar packs, the speed awareness monitors. We might actually wind up with three, if we can...
I'm sorry, the money's being decreased from which fund?
Decreased from salaries, because they've had vacancies for a period of time, and they're likely not to see, to reach what's budgeted for their salaries, because they currently still have three vacancies, or maybe even four, anticipate another retirement this year as well.
Okay. Money that won't be needed. And I'm sorry, the $18,000 for Code employee absences, I'm not quite...
We are, we are...
Sure I understand.
...in professional services for, in order to have administrative work accomplished at the Code Office.
Okay, okay, that helps explain it.
We have an employee on a long-term absence due to health reasons.
Okay. Any other questions? And those are the items?
Those are the items.
Thank you. Okay. All right, well, we will consider ourselves adjourned at 8:38 PM. We'll have a regular session next Monday night, and we'll be having first readings for some of these ordinance, and second and third for others. Thank you, and good night.